So I'm going to call the meeting to order. First item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Will you join us? Pledge allegiance. Let's do the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic, for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, for the liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can I suggest that we use some of the extra chairs we have here for our audience members who are trying to find seating?
Sure.
Ralph just brought some more chairs in. I think we're going to have a chair for everybody.
All right.
Chairs for chairs.
See how they do.
We have chairs on the side also here.
If need be, we've got some extra chairs up here you can grab.
It looks like we could put a half a row in there.
One, two, three.
We have some chairs for chairs here.
So one person missing. Wow. Okay. Just to know for the record, the officers of the board all were unable to meet the meeting, so the chair asked me to come out of retirement to chair the meeting. At his request, I'm doing so. All right, so we'll move to Section 3 of the agenda, which is the work session. First item is the 2017 to 18 school calendar extension due to the unfortunately large number of snow days that we've had and high school graduation dates. Frank Costanzo, what are we looking at here?
So as you know, it's been a difficult winter for us. We have had to add or close school on six occasions during the climate weather this year. So based upon that number, provided we don't have any additional snow days, we would be looking at the last day of school, Tuesday, June 18th, 2018. That would include a normal dismissal on Friday, June 15th, and middle school promotions happening on the 15th at 6:00 p.m. There would be two-hour early dismissals on June 18th and June 19th. In our rotation calendar cycle, Norwalk High School would graduate first on Monday, June 18th. That ceremony would start at 6:00 p.m. Bryan McMahon High School would hold commencement on Tuesday, June 19th, at 6:00 p.m. This calendar maintains the 182-day schedule for grades 1 through 12.
Okay.
So you have the calendar as revised attached. This is just for your information. We don't consider this a calendar revision that would create need board action. We're simply extending the days out. As always, there are parents who are very anxious to know the graduation date, particularly anticipating a change in the calendar, so that's why we're reviewing this with you tonight. Normally, we would do this at your business meeting in April, but we're doing it early simply so that we can notify people and people can plan, as we've had a number of inquiries already.
Okay. Any questions, comments?
Thank you, Frank.
All right, thanks, Frank.
And I just wanted to provide a little bit of introduction to our main work session topic tonight, which is the redesign of our gifted program. I wanted to, for the benefit of new board members as well as some members of the public that may not be aware of this, I just wanted to provide a little bit of background as to how we came to this place and these recommendations being made to you tonight. The board at its retreat last summer set as a priority implementation step for this year. And by the way, these are the priority implementation steps of our strategic operating plan. When we do enough of them, we achieve the plan. The board set as a priority implementation step the redesign of the gifted program. And that redesign began or was sourced in the same way other changes in our school system have been sourced. It was based on data. And the data at the time showed that while the district made a very significant investment in the gifted program, eight positions, over a million dollars a year, that the program was, at least compared to other districts and nationally, was not serving enough children, was serving a relatively small number of students. On the other hand, the participation in the program was disproportionate to the demographics of our school system and community. And finally, that the achievement level of children in the gifted program did not improve over time as a result of being in the program. I've mentioned to you that it has been flat. And raising student achievement in a school district really involves all groups of students doing better and fulfilling their potential. And we can't just work on the highest needs students. And as you know, our highest needs students have done much better recently, but we have to enable students at all levels to find talents, to grow, to become everything that they can become. This is the essence of when we say every child reaching their potential. And so I'll just finish this introduction by telling you a little story. Tracy School, which as you're aware has done very well in the last couple of years, actually moved categories in the state accountability plan, no longer the low-performing school that it had been historically. Tracy School had one of the fewest rates of participation in the old AT program of any school. And as you know, this year, our teachers of the gifted stepped up, implemented the invention convention. Thank you for doing that. It was a huge success. And at Tracy School, they allowed, since there were so few students in the AT program, they allowed all students to participate who wanted to. And Tracy has now sent, and this is a school with the fewest number of gifted students, well, has now sent seven, the largest number of students, to the state finals of any Norwalk school, to the invention convention. And as our former chief academic officer used to say, "It's all about opportunity to learn." When our students are given an opportunity that they didn't have before, they do just as well as students in other school districts. They do better. And we have seen that time and time again. And this is all about creating a broader concept of giftedness and providing opportunities for students to excel in certain areas. They may not excel in all areas, but they will find an area where they will excel and find themselves, and that will lead to new and better things for them. We have with us tonight a committee that has worked extremely hard over the past year, along with their national consultant, and is presenting recommendations based upon best practice in our state and our nation, adapted to our situation in Norwalk. I'm going to introduce the committee chair, Yvette Gorovich, who will introduce the committee, and then they will take you through the process that they followed and the recommendations that they're making.
Thank you, Superintendent Adamowski. It is my pleasure to introduce my four partners this evening. Dr. Nancy Eastlake from the University of Connecticut, longstanding leader in gifted and talented education, and our very own Diane Bellardo. And if anyone is going to do a review with a sense of urgency of data, Diane is the person that he wants sitting next to you. So thank you both.
What's wrong with the mic?
Thank you, Mrs. Cooper. I would also like to introduce members of the committee that have worked with us diligently. And let me just walk you through some of the handouts that you should have in front of you, and then I can refer you to the PowerPoints and introduce the committee members. So in front of you, you should have a copy of the PowerPoint. There is a copy of the Hanover Report that was reviewed last summer at the board retreat. There is a very new, hot-off-the-press handout reflecting changes in the state regulations.
I don't think we have that.
We will get those for you.
That one we still need.
And we prepared a summary of a glossary for you because we're going to be talking about a lot of terms that are specific to gifted and talented education. So perhaps we can get their copies back there. Perhaps we can make sure the board has those copies. So it is my pleasure to recognize the members of the committee. Many of them are sitting behind me. On the committee, in addition to the superintendent, who's board member, Brian Meek, Diane Bellardo, Principal Teresa Rangel, Principal Kristi Goldstein, thank you for being here, Principal Damon Lewis, a very beloved AT teacher, Sky Livingston, who really took an enormous leadership role in the committee and working with us. Sky unfortunately is not feeling well, but committee members did speak with him. He is on the mend, and he sends his best regards for all of his work this evening. Parents, Eliana Zungia, Jody Statler, who is here, Anthony DeLoro, of course Nancy Eastlake, Sally Reese, who is the distinguished professor and the chair in Educational Psychology at UConn, and a quite inspiring student, Jacob Tomlin, worked with us. Those of you that have had an opportunity to hear Jacob speak about his inspiration and his aspirations, he's a young man that we should keep an eye on. He's going to do great things to change and develop strategies to solve our problems. The committee worked very, very hard with a sense of urgency. We had six meetings. They are on the PowerPoint. We should go to the next slide. There were six meetings. We held three focus groups, two with community members inviting the chairs or the co-chairs and the leadership of the SGCs, and one very inspiring evening with a focus group of students grades six through high school came around this table, and they really, really let us know what is important and how we can improve our service delivery. They were really inspirational that night. We met with the school leaders in February. Committee members did three site visits to look at programs that were identified regionally as providing models of exemplars in gifted or talented education. A group of us went to the most recent Connecticut Association for the Gifted. That's where I brought back the handouts that you should now have, and that was a forum on changing state guidelines. Just note that Norwalk got an enormous shout-out at that meeting. We were publicly recognized for the work that the redesigned committee was doing. And we have another workshop scheduled in May, and when we talk about identification strategies, I'll go into a bit more information about the NAGLARI assessment. We were charged by the superintendent with a series of steps that we approached with a sense of urgency. As Dr. Adamowski has indicated, we were concerned about the data, both on who is participating and issues related to our identification procedures that were leading to disproportionality in participation, as well as outcomes of the students who were identified, and we do have some data to share with you this evening. In addition, in the midst of this, the State Department of Education enacted a new public law, 17-82, which specifically speaks to changes in the identification and service delivery. So we were ahead of the curve in that we were already studying that, which we were now mandated to study and redesign. The committee's charges are listed there on Slide number three. I will not read them to you, but as you see, they cover all aspects from early identification to appropriate identification and assessment measures, looking at best practices from the research, relying in part on the Hanover Report, but delving deeper into other aspects of research, looking at the qualifications of our staff, as well as how we can increase, as we've already announced, increased participation of all students and those students with gifted and talented potential and achievement to participate in regional, statewide, and national competitions, as well as to look hard at the data with regard to the effectiveness of our investment in gifted education. And we did all of that with a sense of urgency over the last six to seven months. So let's see who we are serving and what the data tells us about that. So Diane is going to walk us through the next slide.
We're looking at a five-year trend, 2013, '14, right through 2017, '18. This is October 1 data. We see our total enrollment, and we're serving students in grades three through eight, and that's the red bar, and you see those totals. And the green are the number of students each of these five school years that were served in the academically talented program through grades three through eight. One thing you might notice is that the number of students that we are currently serving across those five years, it's a decreasing number, yet we do see an increasing enrollment.
You do want to take steps to change that?
Yes. Just a question. Did you drill down to figure out why? Is it that they aren't testing?
We've been using the same lump system of identification since 2006.
And students are doing, latching well on that test? Is that the reason for the lower?
As our demographics are changing, we're underrepresenting certain subgroups of our global population. And I think that is a hard speech to that. We're also proposing a rethinking of students who may be gifted or potentially gifted or talented in one area and not across the board at that cutoff. The tests that we were using were very heavily weighted in the verbal areas, so we know that our second language learners were underperforming and being underidentified. And that does bring us to the next slide. So this slide is quite telling. Diane, you'll walk us through that?
Yes. Again, we're looking at a five-year trend. You see a stat graph that shows the distribution of Asian, Black, Hispanic, White, and others. It all represents the distribution of students in grades three through eight, and the AT students are within that school year, the distribution. So what do you notice? One of the most glaring things, you see that in the 17, '18 school year, 60% of students served by the AT program are white, yet in grades three through eight, 29% of our students are white. Likewise, take a look at Hispanics, serve 21%, yet in grades three through eight, they represent 49. So you see a disproportionality in the data. Is this unique to Norwalk? Certainly not. The USED did a study through the Office of Civil Rights in the 2013, '14 school year that looked at the disproportionate nationality nationally and by state. And Norwalk looks very much like Connecticut overall, and certainly like many other states across this nation. Yet, this is a problem. We've been named a district of innovation, so this is our chance to show that innovation as we address this problem.
And if we were to do this stat graph on economic factors or second language learners, the demographics would look very, it does look very, very similar in terms of who is being identified and who is being served. So the next graph. So what's happening with the students? We don't want to remove anyone already identified. We want to mine the gold and increase the numbers of students that we're serving. And at the same time, we want to raise the achievement levels of those students that are in our academically talented and potentially gifted program. So if you want to walk us through that data?
Sure. You know, when you measure student performance, you look at two areas. You look at achievement and you look at growth.
Diane, could you speak into the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. So as we're looking at this side of the graph, you see that we're looking at the actual achievement of our academically talented students, and we're looking at the percent that reached a Level 4 on Smarter Balance. That's our summative assessments in grades three through eight. And what Level 4 means is that a student that reaches Level 4 exceeds the achievement standard. And remember, this achievement standard is grade-level standard, and this test is for our entire school population. This is not the gifted students. Now keep that in mind, and we have two years' worth of data because Smarter Balance is relatively new. And you can see that in ELA, in 2016, that 69% of our AT students reached that high level of achievement, Level 4, and a little more in 2017.
Diane, did you say Level 4 is above grade level?
It is not.
What is Level 4?
Level 4 means exceeds achievement standard. Smarter Balance is a grade-level test with four levels: below standard, approaching standard, meeting standard is Level 3, and the fourth level is exceeding standard. Typically, when we report results, we report a combination of Level 3 and 4, and we refer to that as the percent at proficiency or above.
If we were to add Level 3 to this?
It would be about 92% of our students. But keep in mind, we're talking about 10% of our top students. What would you expect in terms of the percent that would reach Level 4 if, in fact, you are the top 10%? I have my, I would expect, and this is my opinion, because we don't have comparable data statewide or nationally to look at, but I would expect about 90% of our students would reach. I don't know if my colleagues agree with that, but...
They certainly agree with that.
Okay. So that's a measure of achievement. Now let's take a look at a measure of growth.
Can I ask one question before you leave?
Sure.
Maybe you don't have this information readily available, but what percentage of all students get Number 4?
About statewide, that's about between 20 and 24%. I'd say it's around 20% for ELA, 24% for math.
And in Norwalk?
In Norwalk, it ranges, it's about 20% to 22%. I mean, this is, to reach that Level 4 is quite an achievement, particularly on Smarter Balance. But keep in mind, the group of students that we're looking at, the academically talented students. Okay, the second, so we said we looked at achievement based upon Smarter Balance. Now we're looking at growth based upon NWEA Math. That's our local assessment that is given in ELA and math in grades three through 10, three times a year: beginning of year, middle year, and end of year. And again, this is a new test for us. This is our second year of full implementation, and we just reviewed the results of the projected growth fall to winter. The NWEA system generates a projection based upon a child's score, called a RIT score, and says, "Based upon the norming studies nationally, we expect students to meet this projected growth." So what percent of AT students met that projected growth in reading? 60%. What percent met math? 65%. Yes.
Well, I'm sorry, you may have answered my question in the rest of your sentence, so I apologize for the wrong thing.
It's okay.
But let's say, for instance, in reading, the projected growth over 10 months over a school year, I'm using just a traditional standard, and we're saying only less than 60% of the students in AT would meet that standard?
That's correct.
Well, that would be just below the expectation in a normal classroom setting for a normal student in a normal setting, 10 months of growth over 10 years, irrespective of where they started.
Correct.
This is consistent with the data we reviewed at the retreat, which was ESPEC data, actually, but it showed that it was flat and it was not growing. Now, this is a different look at it with the NWEA, which has a national growth standard, but it confirms really the same finding.
Now, what was the growth for our non-AT students in that same period?
Actually, for all students in grades three through eight, this fall to winter, 60% for reading, so essentially for reading that was identical, and 57% for math. Now, the National Association for Gifted Students, they have found that when you look at gifted students, the growth is usually 18 to 24 months of growth in a 12-month period. So what does that mean? We would expect these students to grow a year and a half to almost, well, a year and three-quarters in one school year. If these students are only meeting 60% of the projected growth, which are not norms for academically talented students, they are norms for all students across the United States, I would say this is not representative of what academically talented students should achieve and grow.
Can I ask though, but let me play devil's advocate. Let's say they're doing things in that particular AT setting that would not be the kind of things that would show up, let me put this way, in the short term, on an end-of-grade test. However, they are preparing the students, these students, for the kinds of activities that'll take them far beyond the normal high school or college curriculum. They're doing things that, so you may have a short-term deficit or problem, but the long-term, no, I'm speculating there. There may be a lot of data indicating I'm right or wrong, who knows? But the kinds of things, I think in my mind, they should be learned, would be the kinds of things that you may not find in a fourth or fifth grade standardized test.
And we can test them on mutually exclusive...
I agree.
We may be in the weeds here a little bit because giftedness and testing don't always parse. In fact, Renzo Lee, in his speeches, always talks about leaders in our culture who were notoriously bad students and tested horribly, but were innovators in our culture. So I think we're in the weeds talking about testing. But I do want to point out that a child who is in 99th percentile on testing is not going to have a lot of growth shown in testing results if she's testing at the 99th percentile the next year. So I'm not sure that growth is a metric that will help us here.
Well, okay, that's an important point, though. If they were all fours, that would be correct. But our students are not, and they're not growing.
If you think of Smarter Balance, there are targets associated with where students fall within those levels, and in fact, the lowest-performing student and the highest-performing students all have expectations for growth.
So based upon who we were identifying and are identifying, the outcomes for the students that we have already identified and the changes in state regulation, we knew we needed to delve deep into... we needed to delve deep into the work. And if we continue our commitment with redesign, we, our goal is to serve more children with higher expectations. I have a sign in my office that says assume competence. You know, assume the highest level, and it is our job to help them reach that. At the same time, looking at our existing resources to be able to meet the, the sense of urgency that we felt the data and the change in regulation presented. So we began with the Hanover Report. And I must say, that first committee meeting, we walked through two exercises.
What's the Hanover Report?
The Hanover Report is in front of you. It was from 2017. It looked at the current state of our AT program and made several recommendations. And we have studied that, that report as a starting point of our study this year in the group. And I provided it for the board, for your evening review.
I, I should explain to the board, we are members of the Hanover Consortium, and as a result of, I mean, there's thousands of school district members. But as a result of membership, you get their ongoing research, but you also get to ask them four, four times a year for customizable reports. And this is, this is one of the ones we asked for, for this year.
Page seven, and it's up on the screen, shows you the three priorities set by the redesign committee. One was a deep dive and review of the student identification process. While we were at that task, we thought it'd be a good idea to also comply with the change in federal, in state regulation. We spent a good deal of time talking about staffing and our investment in our current program, the qualifications of teachers, and how to use the, the existing allocation of staff in an effective, an efficient way, as well as what professional development in service, as well as working with our colleagues at the university for pre-service and recruitment of qualified staff. And then we spent a long, a long period of time delving into the program restructuring and possible program redesigns that we're prepared to present to you. I must say that any one of these topics could fill an evening. Any one of these topics could fill a master's level program of study. So I respectfully say we're going to attempt to give you the overview, knowing full well that there's continued work to pull the weeds to get to implementation.
Yvette, can I just interject for one minute? As far as the program restructuring design, and I'm sure that took a lot of time at the committee and really looking at that. For me, from my own personal experience and from other parents that have gone through the process, I had three children that went through the AT program in middle school. Two of them are in high school now and one is in college. I felt that it really wasn't a holistic approach. An amazing program, fantastic teachers, but I think the testing part of it, I had to go through a couple of appeals to help my children get through. And the testing aspect of it was really difficult, I think, for some students to kind of get through. And teacher recommendations just kind of never happened. So I think looking at this restructuring and the design is really critical in moving it forward, because you have a lot of children out there that should be part of that program. And parents shouldn't have to fight in the appeal process to get their children through. So I think delving into it further and looking at it. Again, our teachers really do a great job as far as AT, a lot of our teachers do, but having those children be acclimated, continue to grow, you'll have less behavioral issues as well. But striving to keep doing better and to do well, I think is really important. And using that holistic approach and having recommendations, which I think is really important. You might have a student that doesn't do well, testing, or does adequate in testing, but is getting A's, straight A's in classes. So I think you have to really look at that.
Or has some other talent.
Or other talent.
That may not be the straight A student, but is remarkable in a particular area of passion.
And also the social component. You might have a very quiet child, and that's okay if you have a quiet child, or if you have a very outspoken student, that's okay too. But I think if you look at a well-rounded student and what that really means, looking into this further, I think will help you move this forward.
Excellent. We, we heard anecdotal stories during our work. PhDs, school leaders, presidents and CEOs of companies, attorneys, all sat, and many said, "I remember the day that I didn't get accepted." Or my child, who was as bright or brighter than I am, did not get accepted. And that sense of rejection still pierces their heart after they've completed a PhD. And we've also heard stories from students that tell us, "I love being in program because I love working with similarly minded, passionate students." So, you know, we, we heard those stories and it informed our work as we moved forward. So the, the priorities were there. We're going to give you the first, second, and third of these priorities while giving you some internal detail to each of those. So the first priority, as Heidi said, was the identification process that we lovingly call mining for gold. So who are the students that we want to find and teach and coach and mentor to become the leaders that we assume competence for? So I'm going to turn it over to Nancy, who'll walk through that for us.
You may want to just change seats with Nancy, so this meeting is being recorded, and also folks in the back want to hear.
So before we could do any changing of the actual identification process, we really needed to think about and talk about at great length, who are the gifted individuals we're trying to reach out to? How do we find them? What do they need? And in order to do that, we turned to the work of Dr. Joseph Renzulli, who many of you are perhaps very familiar with, but maybe some of you are not. Dr. Renzulli is at the University of Connecticut. He is an internationally known expert in the area of giftedness and gifted education. He is revered by all over. It's just wonderful. And he is very accessible to people, so it's an honor and a wonderful experience to work with him. In his work on what is giftedness, how do we define it? He studied the lives of eminent individuals for a long period of time. And he studied those lives in order to try and find out what were the characteristics common to these people that enabled them to reach heights of eminence or, or real expertise in their chosen field. And as Yvette said, we could spend a semester or longer really understanding this. But there are three essential characteristics that emerged from all of his study. And they are that each of these individuals were indeed, had indeed above-average intelligence, maybe, possibly not, not the frequently genius level that we think of when we think of gifted, but very bright people. They had, they were very creative people. They thought differently. They, they were risk-takers. They were problem solvers. They were innovators. They would see relationships in, in things that many people would not see, oh, yes, that's really similar to that in that way. Creative thinkers. And then, of course, they were task committed. They had focused motivation in some area that really led them to be persistent and not give up on trying to find out whatever it was that was passionately important to them. And when they brought those three characteristics or behavioral characteristics together, focused on some area or endeavor that was very important to them, we would see, or what would occur would be gifted behaviors. And so when we talk about giftedness, we are really talking about emerging behaviors that will bring about a gifted response. Dr. Renzulli often says, "Giftedness is bound in the response to something." And so we're, it's an action, and it's dynamic, and it's, and it's very exciting. And I invite you to read on your own the quote on this same page by Harry Passau, who's another well-known and revered expert in the area of giftedness. And essentially, what he's saying is that we're really talking about the development of potential. And what we want to do is to develop a identification process that will allow us to see not only those students who we think are already showing great giftedness in their actions, but those students who show potential. And if you take a look here, you will see what we're, one of the things we're trying to do is to get away from this and to ensure a fair selection. You all get the same test. You must all climb that tree. Well, that speaks for itself. So our identification policy and procedure is going to involve many criteria for each student, not just a test, not just climbing a tree, not just grades, but many, many different factors.
I have a question.
Yes.
This is the traditional, they changed the, I'm looking at degrees of reading power in the ARP, have they changed that from what it used to be? Because it used to be a test that, there was, it was a very controversial test, it lasted two weeks, far too, it outlived its usefulness, in my opinion. And I would argue that this is not the test you want to use to measure these traits you just described.
And you are absolutely correct. It's not part of the proposal. We're fine with it.
That's what we're doing now.
That's okay.
I spoke the ARP.
Every step, we all agree on it.
That's unfair. Dr. Kimmel.
Apologize, apologize. That test can be game easily.
Dr. Kimmel, before this effort was initiated, we had the opportunity to meet with Dr. Renzulli and Dr. Reese, who visited Norwalk, gave them an overview of our program. They looked at it, you know, we said, "What's, what's your reaction as we, you know, go into this study and attempt to change it?" They were most horrified by the identification process, which they felt was old, was dated, was biased, had been discredited years ago. What was it, was it 1985? Okay, so you can see how, you know, this is, this is kind of representative of this change gap that, in our school system, right? Where nothing happened for this period of, of time. We see it in a number of, of areas. But yeah, this, this has been a great concern. The committee worked really hard on this, and we were, this is an area where we have, where we need outside expertise and national best practice.
So I'm, I'm going to speak loud and maybe just point it a little bit. My voice usually carries. In respect for time and in respect of your comment, I'm going to refer to the next slide of what is proposed. So the SOI, which is one of the tests that we're using currently, along with the degrees of reading power, will no longer be used. It's our proposal that we move into a Nagliary test assessment. It's a non-verbal problem solving. For those of you that may remember the matrix of, of your GRE days, you know, this is to that, is that is to something else. So it's, it's a non-verbal test. We have found that our current testing underrepresents, as I said before, students who are second language learners and greatly underrepresented or twice-exceptional students. They may not test well on those verbal assessments, but can just exceed expectations when you give them other alternative measures. I will turn it over to Diane to talk about our current reading and math assessments that'll be used.
Yes. So the proposal, as, as Ms. Gorbich said, will be the Nagliary, which is really a culturally neutral test, non-verbal, and that will measure general ability. In terms of student achievement, we will not be doing additional testing. We will be using our NWEA Math testing, which is given, as I said, three times a year. And we will look at the summative Smarter Balance assessment. In addition, we'll be looking at work samples or student portfolios. So that's an area where our professionals will be getting professional development. We will be looking at alternate pathways. By that, we mean recommendations of teachers, parents, and students themselves. And as far as teacher input, we will be using the Renzulli Learning Scales, which will be completed online by teachers for nominated students. And it is, it is looking at student motivation. It's almost like a survey using a Likers scale. We're looking at motivation, learning, creativity, and motivational leadership as criteria, not just limited to academics.
Nice question.
Yes.
On the portfolios, does this mean a student who applies puts together a portfolio? Or does, do all the students in all the classes, they have portfolios?
Right. That's, that's it.
Okay, I have a question about the portfolios. I don't know how it works here, so I'm curious. In the portfolios, do we see, do we see the process from the initial draft to the finished process? Or do we see the, just the final product, which often is the result? It can be a result of many things. If for one student, it can be five drafts with the help of a teacher. With another student, it's the first draft with a couple changes, even though the final products can be identical.
The work samples will be benchmark work samples over a period of time. It will include writing samples as well as alternative kinds of presentations. I'm thinking about invention convention and that as a work sample from our second graders that participated. It may not be a finished product of a writing sample, but certainly.
It's not filled with finished products.
No, it's not. It's processed. That's it. Yes.
Just two quick questions. As far, and I'm glad that Bruce, that you just brought that up about the portfolio. The alternate pathways, teachers, so we're still looking, which I think is very critically important to have teacher input, because you're teachers that are working with these kids, kids day in and day out. So that's critically, very, very key. Parent and student nomination, are you speaking about a parent nominating their own child or another child?
We hadn't thought about that.
Because you could have.
But that would be, that would be really interesting.
You could have a parent nominate and see success in another child where that child or that student might not see that. So I'm curious if we can incorporate.
We hadn't thought of that.
That. And then also student nomination. So you're having other students nominate other students as well. One other quick thing, the emotional and social part of it, I think you might have a student that meets all this criteria. And I know, again, which I'm thrilled about having a holistic approach, but are they socially ready? How are they interacting with their peers? Or is there a component?
We do get to the social, emotional learning in the program redesign, so if we can get back to that, we will.
Yes. My question.
So the Nagliary assessment, and I don't know a ton about it, but I know they use it in New York City.
Yes.
Is there, so it's supposed to be culturally neutral. Is there outcome data that sort of conforms to demographic breakdowns that we've looked at that would suggest that it is actually, in effect, really culturally, you know, not, that's not just the intent?
Well, actually, we're using the Nagliary now.
Okay.
As part of a research study that we've been involved with for five years with UConn called Project Spark, supporting and promoting advanced learning and, and readiness in kids. This is, this has been a project of Dr. Catherine Little, and it is going on with control and comparison groups at Brookside, Kendall, Jefferson, and Tracy School. And I've looked at the, part of that, the measures that are used for that study is the Nagliary and the NWEA. Teachers look at student behaviors in K2 in that program. And once they have a behavioral scale that says this child has potential, then they're given the Nagliary. It's not given universally. But just looking at that Nagliary results, it clearly is identifying more under. But just looking at that Nagliary results, it clearly is identifying more underrepresented students in the district than our current identification process. I mean, it's not apples to apples, but what, when I've looked at the data, clearly it has.
So there may not be the perfect, you know, totally unbiased test. Probably no test is totally unbiased. But this comes a long way from the level of bias in our current assessment and is considered the, one of the most unbiased measures that exist now.
And we need to always rely on multiple measures. That's key.
So I'm glad to hear some of the comments, especially about the proposed methods being more applicable for English language learner students as well. That is a primary concern. That is great to hear that that is taken into consideration. So one question about the proposed portfolio. Will this be, is there a rubric or is there a percentage of things? How does the discussion happen with all of these pieces? Because we want to look at multiple measures and we know that some students will excel in some areas and not excel as much in other areas, which is completely appropriate for student development. But I am thinking about how will some level of consistency in those discussions happen? I mean, I think about college admissions and similar cases in this. Since it's such a, you have multiple measures, yet it's still a very subjective conversation.
We will be looking at regional best examples of the rubric, and that's part of our in-service and professional development to develop that. And that will be some work that the board will bring forth when you reexamine your policy on gifted and talented education in the coming months. So yes, there will be a rubric. I don't have the rubric to give you to see.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm just backtracking to the portfolio. Has the committee identified a program with which to track that? And have you identified how much time that will take for the classroom teachers and/or the AT teachers to manage that? Is there a plan?
So the portfolios are current work samples. They're, we're not giving additional, we're not giving additional work to anyone. They're currently looking at that. And we will be looking at electronic portfolios that we'll be able to take pictures of or upload work samples, so that will travel with a student from grade to grade. We have not.
We've not identified a program.
No, not yet.
Okay, thank you.
I do want to point out before I move from the page that the new state regulations requires identification pre-K through 12. We all have met that five-year-old that we knew the moment we met that child, that everything their parents said about them was true, that they were truly, truly there and waiting for us. And you'll hear in our redesign how individual mentoring and coaching will be available to those very young children. But this is a change. The other change is flexible enrolling identification. So no longer will you get one bite of the apple and then another bite to appeal. We're looking to find the children and they can be identified in grade three, in grade four, in grade five, in grade seven, and so on. And there will be flexible groupings when we get into the cluster grouping model. We'll talk about that. But students will be added as they're identified, and we're not waiting just for that one opportunity. We're really trying to open the identification process.
I want to, may I? I want to commend you on really coming up with a very smart entry system. It's really excellent. And I'm also very excited about this K2 identification. Begging for differentiation from K through two is very painful for parents, and I'm very excited that this is part of it.
Back to the Nagliary. They are using it in New York. They have, I just checked. There's different subtypes of the test. I just checked. It's been a while. And a lot of what I saw in this particular subtype, dealing with variety of patterns and stuff like that, is the kind of stuff that should be done in an excellent classroom, okay, for an entire class, which is going to be a topic that I'm concerned about when we get further onto the school-wide approach to this. Because if we're not doing this now in our regular classrooms, that's a problem. AT aside, academically talented aside. So that's the issue. We're giving a test to identify kids for academically talented. And what I just saw, the basic, basically, the basic spatial relations or what we're talking about, patterns, is something that every good first, kindergarten, first and second grade should be doing across the board. So what are we doing, what are we not doing now? That's my question. What are we not doing?
So Dr. Joseph Renzulli has been noted to have said that what is good for the gifted child is good for all children. Now, we are a long way from that in our education system, in any education system today. But the hope is that if you can do this on a large enough scale, that it will influence the rest of the education system, that it will influence the rest of the school. And just as we have seen practices in special ed influence our current conception of tier one, tier two, and tier three SRBI intervention, a robust gifted program should influence instruction across the board.
I get it. But here's the dilemma. And when you deal with, I'm a big fan of school-wide enrichment, embedded in the curriculum, everything that they do all day, which is difficult to do and to differentiate at the same time. Sometimes you're asking, impossible. But there is a difference between the second graders who catch on with Nagliary right away at the second grade assessment and the second graders who catch on right away with the third grade Nagliary and the fourth grade Nagliary. You're going to have to figure out, are they going to stay in that class? Are they going to have something special? For them, that's got to be addressed, which is a certain problem.
When we get to the redesign, we address it head-on. We know what's controversial in this presentation, and we will hit that in about 10 minutes.
What I call, this is two hundred and fifty, is the status issue and the budget issue, okay? And you're dealing with academic and demographics. You also have to deal with perceived status and budgetary implications down the road.
So we're going to deliver that discussion this evening.
Okay.
May not have all the answers, but we have all the questions. So I would like to move a little bit faster to go through the second priority. It's somewhat self-explanatory so that we can spend the time in the key concepts of redesign. And the second priority was staffing and technical development. And Nancy, you'll sure. So currently, there are two vacancies in the staffing for the current AT program, and we are looking to replace those individual teachers. So that will need to be addressed. There, we're also looking to have the enrichment staff, the current AT teachers, become involved in the University of Connecticut's 12-credit online course, which will give them certification through UConn to be gifted education educators. Just to go back, the two vacancies will be master's level in gifted education, and UConn has made the commitment to work with us around training and recruitment.
I'm sorry to interrupt, Nancy. Sure. Just as long as we're talking about the two vacancies, do we have a plan for long-term subs for the fourth quarter for those vacancies?
Yes, the plan is to have long-term subs.
Do we have those subs in place for the quarter, which starts just a few days?
I believe this is being worked on, and we will have subs. So those two vacancies, unfortunately, are being filled by subs for the remainder of the year. That is so that we can ratchet up the qualifications of the new staff we hire for the next school year. So those two positions will be filled by gift, by master's gifted level teachers, which is the recommendation, by the way, from gifted experts. But for existing staff, we will pay for this 12-credit certification, and that will bring them to a higher level of qualification. I'm sorry.
I don't mean to get into the weeds on this particular issue, but the long-term subs that are being identified to fill those vacancies for the rest of the quarter, are they having particular support or particular curricular resources that, so that they can, you know, do what has?
The principals have identified the long-term subs for their building. At the middle school, there's the rotation, so they're looking for people that have particular expertise in whatever the subject is. It has been problematic, and we know that, you know, one of our superstars was out also. So we, you know, we're dealing with approximately 35% of our staff being filled by substitutes. And it is a problem for the remainder of the year that we will, you know, work towards rectifying in the long-term planning.
Sarah, the issue of support, though, for new gifted teachers, whether they're a substitute or simply a new teacher to our system, is an unmet need at this point. And I think you'll see later in the recommendations that there's a recommendation for a lead teacher or a coordinator that would be able to provide some clinical supervision and support to the other gifted teachers or fill in as necessary or, you know, provide a substitute with support if someone were sick for a period of time and so on. We don't do that now. We need to do that.
We are recommending that all of the staff involved attend the UConn Summer Institute, the Confrute, everywhere that you go and look at model programs. That's the one consistency that staff have verbalized, that that's high-power, week-long training. And as Superintendent just indicated, we're looking to identify resources for the part-time coordinator, the in-service credits that we just spoke about, to fast-track those staff currently working in our AT program who choose to continue. They can opt out, but if they choose, we will support them, as well as resources of a guidance, counseling, a support person that I'll speak a bit more about to address the social, emotional learning. They said to me by one of our AT teachers that the rose in my class very often is the thorn in the typical classroom, and we'll explain why. So the social, emotional support is there. So let's get into the program design, and let's hit the areas that we feel generated the most discussion and controversy. So are we moving forward? Okay, we're ready. Okay. So these big concepts are included in your glossary. If you want to go back. We will get you the glossary. They were out there. And we are talking about a school-wide enrichment model, which is the umbrella under which many spokes will be supported. We will talk about a concept of curriculum compacting. We will talk about interdisciplinary study, which will be cluster grouping and how we get there. We have lovingly renamed it, hoping that the board loves it as much as we do, as Young Scholar Interdisciplinary Study. We will lead you through and ask you to participate with us in developing an enrichment cluster this evening, and our redesign team will be your coaches in that. So we need approximately 10 minutes. We'll talk about the increased access to the competitions, and then the big dream in our rollout of a three-year plan to move to a Young Scholar Academy that could be a school within a school or a magnet school, supporting the strategic operating plan role of increasing school choice for parents. So with that, Nancy will walk us through some of the big thinking issues. So back to Dr. Renzulli and his work. And the model that followed his definition of giftedness is known as the school-wide enrichment model. It's very important that the people you are identifying are being served to meet the needs of how they're being identified, and this model does that. As it says, it evolved after 30 years of research. It is a model that is used all over the world and is proven to be very successful. And the school-wide enrichment model consists of different components. It's not one thing. There are different learning opportunities and different pieces of organizational structure that go into making it a success. There is a total talent portfolio that keeps track of students' interests, their preferences in how they like to express themselves. It involves curriculum compacting, which is a very distinct way of going about differentiation. And of course, enrichment, teaching, and learning, which on the big cube on the screen is the heart of this matter, really. And the enrichment, learning, and teaching can be flexibly worked in regular curriculum, in gifted curriculum, in many ways, to optimize learning for all students and certainly for your brightest students. So it is applied, as it says, to the regular curriculum. It is, this triad is applied to enrichment clusters, as you will see, and it involves a whole continuum of services. And I'll quickly review the three types of enrichment that are involved in this model. The first type of enrichment is Type 1. First type, and it is general exploratory experiences. It's anything that gives a child opportunities to experience new things. It can be a presentation. It can be a performance. It could be a video that is being shown. A myriad of opportunities for this type of enrichment. And the source of this or experiencing this, we're hoping will serve as an inspiration to a student, that something that they see, that they learn about, is truly, truly inspiring to them. The second type of enrichment involves learning different skills. And this area of the enrichment programming moves a student or any individual from being inspired to taking action. What do I want to do with the fact that this is inspiring to me, this topic? How do I go about learning about it? What might I do with it? So there are a whole host of training skills and activities that are done, critical thinking, creative problem solving, creative thinking, research skills, and it goes on and on, that are necessary and part of this model. And the very last, large box at the bottom is the opportunity for the students to engage in interest-based individual or small group projects. Those are going to be our interdisciplinary wonderful opportunities for student learning. And so what you have is a full circle from inspiration to learning how, to acting on what it is you love to learn about.
I have a question. On the top, it says on the left, the regular curriculum. Where does that fit in?
This same, the idea of Type 1, 2, and 3 enrichment, if I can use that jargon for a moment, can be applied to regular curriculum.
I agree.
Whatever the thematic theme of a unit is, you simply can look at it, and it can be differentiated through this process for your variety of learners in the classroom.
And then how does it relate to the enrichment clusters?
The enrichment cluster, which you will learn more about, is built on this, only that is a group activity for all students, and it might be cross-grade level. But it is derived also from one topic that then the group decides what they want to study about it and how they're going to study it. And we will get there.
It's like the iPad commercial where they're studying. It's like the iPad commercial where they're studying gravity for a homework assignment. I don't know if you've seen it. It's great.
So, we are looking at, as we've been talking about, embedding it into content areas. So, it's not, you know, gifted English, but we're looking at that interdisciplinary study that is embedded across content areas. It can lead to in-depth complexity in social studies or in science, as well as those interdisciplinary projects. If you think about invention, convention, you're talking about public speaking, about visual arts, about research, about writing. So, it crosses curriculum areas. I do want to move into the concept of curriculum mapping. And I must admit, I stayed up until I found the right visual for you. And I think this really, really tells the story of why we need to do curriculum mapping. It is true that there are students in our scheduling that are in 90-minute blocks when in reality, they really want to be doing what their passions lead them to, whether it's reading Moby Dick or inventing, you know, the best way to recycle for a school. So, the issue of curriculum compacting, Nancy will lead us through in the next two charts. Again, summary, it could be a whole graduate course.
Yes, and it is.
And it is.
So, obviously, the goals of compacting, and these are, I think, fairly understood as you look at them, to create a challenging learning environment in the classroom or in the enrichment program for all children. It helps you to define the objectives and guarantee there's proficiency in the basic curriculum, as well as going on to do other activities that are more challenging, perhaps, and engaging for the students. Some research findings, they're always interesting. Teachers with 1 to 3 hours of training could eliminate 40 to 50% of content for academically talented students without any loss of achievement. And that has been known for years, really.
So, there was another cartoon about math problem solving. So, that first grader that is now thinking of formulas really doesn't need twice as many single-digit addition problems to complete. And that's where the curriculum compacting really fits in.
But that's just traditional differentiation strategy.
Exactly. My grandfather wrote about that in his graduate thesis in 1910. I'm just saying. No, this is not new. It's not rocket science. This is not new. So, the compactor, which may be used, but certainly compacting can occur without it, but it does sort of show you easily what needs to happen. Within a certain discipline, what is being studied? What needs to be covered? And then, what evidence do you have that the child is ready for compacting? And an area to prove exactly why you are compacting as you are? What are you going to remove from the regular curriculum? Because the child has already mastered this. How did you arrive at that? And then, change it. What are you going to provide for the student, offer to the student to enrich their work?
May I ask a question, Mr. Chair? And maybe Mr. Krevler could help address this. This came up in our curriculum committee. We asked, is there a shadow curriculum, per se? If you have tested a child and they've achieved mastery of a subject, are there differentiated corollary projects in the curriculum for our regular ed. teachers to provide? And the answer was yes, correct? So, we already have this. Okay, just wanted to be sure. Thank you.
Part of the acceleration and the information.
I would just modify that a little bit by saying we have some of it.
We have the suggestion of it.
Yes.
So, we could flesh that up for the ready-ed teacher.
We would need to develop that further with regular education teachers in terms of their development and the accessibility of those activities.
And what would we need to do to achieve that in terms of professional development?
Professional development.
How many days do we have to provide that before the next school year?
Well, we have other things planned right now that represent other priorities in your Strategic Operating Plan, but it certainly is possible. It's, you know, it's, this is the, this brings us back to this issue of tier, high-quality tier-one instruction, right? And, you know, as you saw our Accountability Plan results, you saw great gains on the part of high-need students as a result of Tier 2. But the growth of the average student was less than the growth of the high-need student. And that suggests a need to focus more on Tier 1.
And our recommendation is to do that staff development and develop an online library for those enrichment activities, those enrichment clusters that you'll help us develop tonight, and enhancements to the extenders for acceleration of curriculum, so that we have a library that general education teachers and our AT teachers can share readily and easily.
My understanding is Renzulli has a such a library online.
There is a program that can be purchased. We'll look at that.
What is the cost? You don't have a cost? Okay.
So, we're on to the enrichment clusters.
Can I ask one question about the compacting? So, in general, especially when we're talking about moving this to the whole school as well as, obviously, a focus with using the AT program and the revisions to the AT program also benefiting whole school and all students as well. We talked a little bit about, and you highlight a little bit in here about professional development for the teachers who are doing this. What is the plan for professional development for principals and assistant principals, psych directors, to make sure that they then are able to also support as well as monitor what's being done?
So, we would need to have an approved design by the Board of Education before we could develop a professional development plan to implement it. Basically, the question you're asking is, how do you implement this design? Obviously, professional development is a part of that, and in this case, it would have to occur on several levels. But our plan would be developed once we know what we're doing. And it's not theoretical. And then, again, we have to weigh that against other priorities, the amount of time we have, and the amount of burden we can create reasonably for the regular classroom teacher, which has its limits as well.
And we do have a three-year plan that is summarized at the end from our presentation.
One question, please.
Go ahead.
I appreciate this, where we are right now, I'm thinking in terms of a classroom with a large group of 20, 25 kids in it. How does this part of your presentation relate to the early part around identification? Creativity, commitment to task, and ability?
When we are, we have a whole piece of the presentation that talks about cluster grouping, that will address the increased numbers of students identified as potentially gifted and those that are academically talented, and how to group, and how to get the time to do that interdisciplinary study within the day, and also how to differentiate, that's coming up next. So, I do want to walk through the enrichment clusters. And Nancy will go through the two slides, and then, with the Board's permission, I would like members of our redesign committee to work with you for 10 minutes, digging into it and actually designing an enrichment cluster so that you can walk through a simulation. Typically, it would take weeks, but we're a gifted group here. We'll do it quickly.
Okay. Major features of enrichment clusters: that all activity is directed toward the production of a product or service. And that will immediately raise the level of engagement and thinking and what the children are doing in this particular cluster that has some theme. Students and teachers select the clusters in which they will participate. All students and teachers are involved. So, it's a match between teacher interest and student interest. And more about that as we work into this. Students are grouped across grade levels by interest. So, there will be cross-grade level grouping. It might not be K5, it might be K3 or 3 to 5. But there will be some cross-grade level grouping. And there are no predetermined lessons or unit plans. So, this is key, because between the teacher and the children who have elected to participate in this cluster, it will be decided what is going to be done, what is going to be produced, how it's going to be done, and then it will eventually be shared. But it's very much a collaborative effort. Again, the authentic methods of professional investigators are used to create the products and services. That's the Type 2 skills that we talked about, Type 2 enrichment. Divisions of labor are used to guarantee that all students are not doing the same thing. That will be identifying the individual counts with this group. Some are writers, some are more the artists, the visual artists, depending upon what the cluster is. Some are into production. They will all have a role to play. There are specifically designated blocks of time for the clusters. They have to happen in a rhythmic kind of way in order for these to be successful. And the silver rule of enrichment clusters is that the rules of regular school are suspended. That, not that there isn't any expectation about what's going to happen in these, but this is a different learning experience. And it's very much an enrichment experience between the teacher and the child. There are no grades involved.
Now, there are schools that are currently engaged in core periods, so that's the beginning of that thinking. It's not the entire enrichment cluster. It was recommended to us by schools that are diving very deep into enrichment clusters that Friday afternoons is a great time. Usually, there's a little learning slide that happens. And this is a great way to capture and create passion for learning. And what I would like to do, with your permission, is actually have the Board with members of our team behind us as your coach, perhaps in two groups. Gives us maybe a five, seven-minute break. We'll set a timer. Nancy will be your guide on the side, and we'll actually ask you to develop a cluster for us. So, if the Board will form the two groups, our team will facilitate. Nancy will give them the directions.
Sure.
And it allows me to rest my voice for a moment. And while, we play that comment after we're done, but it's an important one, I don't- I would invite members of our audience to use the handhab, work maybe with a partner. Think about the development of the clusters. I would say from one- We are going to set a 10-minute timer. I have gone to pause that minute. And now, it's time for the gift group.
...
You leave later. Have you had a meeting? 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 You leave later. When people work with passion, it's thought to bring them back to the mundane past. So I do want to hear what you've developed, what both groups developed. So group number one, Sarah, will you apply?
Sure. So for our cluster simulation, we have decided that we are going to make a cooking show for middle schoolers by middle schoolers. And it's going to be called "There's Nothing to Eat." Some of the resources and methodologies we're going to use are cooking shows that exist. For example, Guys Grocery Games or Chop Junior. We had a suggestion of Fodor Farm and an educator who comes to do programs from there. The kitchens that we have in our own system at Columbus McMahon, the high school culinary program, local restaurants and Whittsons. For the roles for our division of labor, we have producer, writers, directors, hosts, food preppers, someone to do outreach to the local community members that we're going to need to work with, AV people, among others. This is where we start running out of time. Skills in terms of alignment with standards, we have sequencing, presentation, editing, writing, public speaking, cooking. Possible funding sources, we have local restaurants possibly or local farms, Whittsons. And our authentic audience is middle schoolers.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Thank you.
And our next group one, collaborative group here. We all worked well together and kind of brainstormed and spoke about different ideas. But ours was more about health and wellness. Having a wellness cluster, looking more about recess, indoor recess, during inclement weather, where it's raining, snowing, what we can do to really get our students, or we're students, but getting all of us motivated to move, especially during transition times. Having specialists come in, so we could have PE teachers, we could look on the internet, get dietitians, get pediatricians. So we'd have a lot of guest speakers to kind of come in and speak to all of us about best practices for us as far as healthy eating and wellness. Transitions we spoke about. Also as a group, we have a brochure. We'd work on a brochure together collectively. We'd get other students input on it and present it to the whole schoolwide, maybe during a schoolwide meeting on a Friday on what we came up with. Maybe doing a little fundraising for the students, we could fundraise. So we would do a lot of that for our school and bring that in. And again, have it schoolwide and best practices. And hopefully, our school would be a model school for other schools. So we'd have other schools visit and show what we have. And hopefully, we can, other than having a NAROC, but maybe bring it statewide as well.
That's great. Thank you very much. Thank you. So now I want to introduce probably the most, and my time is up, introduce the most hotly debated and probably the most controversial part of our redesign recommendation, and that's an introduction to cluster grouping. Remember the operator?
Continue next board meeting, right? This whole cluster continues.
And you will be the first to be the online library editor. So cluster grouping is not a pullout program. When we did our focus groups, the one thing that we heard from everyone was they did not want to be pulled out or staff did not want their students to be pulled out. The kids said it. It's subject to teasing, it's subject to segregation and isolation. The general ed teachers said, "I'm planning for 90 minutes. We weren't thinking about curriculum compacting." And then five kids get up and walk out. And the AT teachers have reported little curriculum overlap between what was happening in the AT pullout and what was happening in the general ed class.
And also it's disruptive as well for not only the students that are pulled out, but also the whole class.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And when we speak in future board meetings about innovations in special education and we talk about program development for students with high functioning autism or students, the push-in models of co-teaching, you will see the braiding of the focus of AT and differentiation in general education and the reduction of pullout as a theme we're going to be talking about.
And also for the students, having to make up that work and interrupting the teachers. I think it was hard, not only for the whole classroom, the teacher as well, but the student feeling like, "I've got to find out what my homework is, what I've missed during that time."
And yet, we've heard from the students and from our focus group, from our community, that the, and the research supports, that there are periods of time when like-minded, passionate, right, gifted people should be provided the opportunity to work together to create that higher level of product of thought and creativity.
So related to that, how much control over the composition of the cluster does the teacher have?
I'm going to get there.
Just way ahead.
I am going to get there. You are like my teacher. But cluster grouping is not fixed tracking. So what is it? If it's not a pullout and it's not fixed tracking, we turn this so many different ways and studied it and we will continue to do so. So cluster grouping is differentiated content. It's instruction across content areas. There are decades of research on it. On page 28, I gave you an elementary school sample so as to bring some concrete information. Purposes of time, I could do it in every grade level across small schools and large schools. This is yet an example. So there are three classes on the fourth grade in this example. All of the AT identified students are clustered in one classroom. The other students, and then it's a heterogeneous grouping. You see that there are some average students, some, you know, students that need remediation. There's one student who is twice exceptional. And lots of those kids that are not always served effectively. Classroom two, you'll see, is also a heterogenous, is a group with heterogeneity. Average students, some above average students. And in classroom three, you'll notice the same kinds of grouping, but here is where the special education students are grouped together. What does this allow us to do? This allows us to differentiate. This allows us to implement gold standard models of co-teaching, both in classroom one and classroom three, reducing the pullout. Through curriculum compacting, it allows for a group of similarly minded or students that need intervention to work together with a specially trained teacher. So this gets us to where we need to be without pulling out and without fixed tracking. These groups are fluid. We've been talking about using the benchmark assessments that are currently built in as well as that rolling admission identification process. So at least twice a year in September and then again in the winter, groups can be flexibly regrouped based upon what we're seeing in terms of student growth and student achievement. This is one example. We have examples across the grade levels. This allows us to use our AT teachers in that classroom one for co-teaching time. This allows us through curriculum compacting to work with those 10 students in a station teaching model, an interdisciplinary study. And this also allows our staff to do coaching and mentoring with students that may be in kindergarten, first, second, third grade, students that we do not typically serve. But now we can utilize the staff most effectively to do a schoolwide model while still looking at a cluster group. Yes.
So fourth grade, classroom one, how are these high achieving students identified?
They're identified through our previous identification methods that we went through earlier.
Let's say you have, one particular school, you have, let's say we have, you have three fourth grade classes. And is it classroom one has teacher A, classroom two, teacher B, classroom three, teacher C?
Correct.
Many years ago, when you had something a little bit similar, kind of tracking in New York, they used to rotate teachers. I'm not sure. So let's say with the teacher in classroom one, as opposed to the teacher in classroom three with the special ed students and variety of supports, they would need, would they need different skill sets?
And different training.
Different training, different skill sets, totally.
Yes. Not totally, in addition to.
In addition, yeah, yeah. You have your basic, then you have your different training. So once you receive that training, basically, teacher A would have classes similar year after year after year, teacher B, year after year after year. Unless there was some request to change and there was the training and things like that, there would be a way to rotate so the teachers didn't get stale.
Yes.
That's the point. So what you're, just so I never thought of, and I find that always hard to believe. So you would put, well, I got some laughs. So you got high achieving students in one class every year for each grade. So there's one particular class. So I'm going to ask you, why is this not traditional tracking? The second question is, good teachers often will rely in a heterogeneous group of utilizing the high achieving students for all kinds of work with other students and this, that. They want sometimes mixed ability groupings for certain kinds of things. So that's just two questions. Why is this not tracking? Or are we losing something?
If you're, if you're looking, if you're looking at the classroom composition, you will notice that all of the remedial students or students that need intervention are not all in the same group, or similarly, every class has above average and average students in it. So it's not tracking where all of the average to above average kids are here and all the average are in the middle and all of the remedial students are in bluebirds or whatever we call them. If you look, there is heterogeneity within the groups. The second issue is it is rolling. So it's not fixed tracking where Bruce is assigned to classroom one and never changes in classroom one. Based upon Bruce's achievement and growth, he may move up or down, generally up, because we've mined the goal and we've noticed that we can move forward. If you look at page 29, it talks about some directionals. I'm sorry.
So just to clarify, the, these classroom groupings are for the clusters or for the school year?
The classroom is, it would be classroom-based, not just a pullout for clusters.
But meaning, so the makeup of the classes?
That's your classroom.
That's your classroom.
This is your reg ed grouping.
That's your reg ed.
Okay. And so with the rolling, with the rolling admission or with the rolling identification, particularly if there's curriculum compacting, if you want to have children moving into the higher classroom, it may be?
You can do departmental interdisciplinary study. Without four children coming out from each class and disrupting the pullout nature. It really works in the middle school. When you look at this in the middle school, and we'll get there, through curriculum compacting, instead of everyone doing that 90-minute block, we can move into a 45-minute block of those accelerated learners. And that then frees up that one teaching period for that interdisciplinary study that could be cross-graded. You could have sixth and seventh graders together and seventh and eighth graders together. I am not, at this point, suggesting we pull the weeds of master scheduling at the middle school. I rely upon my colleagues.
We have a question over here.
One clarification question and then one other question. So on the clarification for high achieving, based on the proposed identification model, which I also commend, I am a little, so in this case, it almost, it seems like we're referring to the high achieving students would automatically be identified as academically talented.
They are already identified that way.
Okay.
And then we will.
High achieving in some ways doesn't necessarily equate to being identified for academically talented.
We could call that group gifted potential, talented. I would like to call them young scholars and begin to think that way.
Essentially, the gifted, the identified gifted students.
Understood. Understood. So, I think part of it is, it, how it appears on here with the, and this is, you know, for future presentation of this as well, it, it appears that the ID categories are being ranked by proficiency level. And so, to know that there may be students, the high achieving, or the most proficient students may not be identified for academically talented, just like there may be some special education students that are identified for academic talent.
Absolutely.
So, just thinking about that from a perception.
We'll, we'll continue to turn this until it gets to where we need to be.
And then, well, and my second question is, I, I'm trying to think through, understood that this is not fixed tracking, it still feels a bit like tracking, so I'm kind of trying to wrap my head around that as, as we think through this. I, I think one of my bigger concerns is how the teachers are being identified and put, not, not, I don't want to say put in these classrooms, but teachers are then assigned to these classrooms, making sure that the most competent teachers for whatever the student composition is, are in front of those students, as opposed to what so often we see across the country, where you have your teachers that then teach AP Bio for 50 years, because that's what they want, and they have seniority, and they then are choosing that, and they may not be the, they may not be the teachers with the best skill set for that grouping of students.
This model, which is included in an SEM model as an option, talks about duly certified staff. So if we have a teacher, now I'm going to classroom three, for example, who's duly certified, it would make sense to use that person in that grouping. Similarly, the staff that are interested in learning about that higher, deeper AT work would be appropriate in classroom one. Again, if we look at page 29.
Wait, before we turn the page, I still have a question. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Actually, I have two. Maybe you tapped on this already, Julie, but how does this affect the average students in classroom three versus the average students in classroom one? We've read the research that shows having above average or high achieving students in the classroom raises the level for everyone. If you remove that from classroom three, are we doing justice to the average students? And if we, also, if we aggregate essentially almost all of our special needs children in classroom three, is that an appropriate education for them? I think this is a problem. So, all, it also presents an opportunity. My second question is.
Do you want me to respond?
Yes, I do. I'm sorry, I was going to give you both first, but go ahead.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. So, if you, well, eh, they're separate, but I think you can hold the thought. If you compact, so if, I, I see an opportunity in this grouping as well, and that is that if you have all your high achievers, and they all have compacted curriculum, and they can achieve the curriculum in 45 minutes of a 90-minute block, you could have the reg ed teacher do the differentiation and the enrichment right there in the classroom without even utilizing the AT teachers. And then we could preserve pullouts.
Yes.
Okay.
You could.
Okay.
You could.
So, go ahead.
All of the research on effective co-teaching strategies, whether it's for AT students, special needs students, second language learners, interdisciplinary study, talks about cluster grouping, so that you can utilize resources most effectively. Today, we were studying another design of NESS, which is a special ed model. It's talking about clustering students within natural proportions. So, we're not talking about 60% of a class being in need of intervention or remediation, but to cluster students to better utilize resources and improve differentiation through the use of effective scheduling for co-teaching is, is the, among the most effective models for delivering specialized services, whether it be for AT students, or whether it be for students who may be twice exceptional, or they need of intervention. It's, it's allowing, it's another presentation about models of co-teaching and how you do that. Didn't mean to rush, but, but the next page talks about.
You didn't answer about the average student, though.
I'm going, I'm going to.
Okay, got it.
So, if, if you look at the rationale, I didn't mean to rush, but it's there. Firstly, there's a deliberate reduction in the diversity that every teacher needs to, needs to deal with. However, it maintains a heterogeneous grouping, which is what makes it different than, makes it different than a tracking system. Every class has average and above average students in it. The second is, and, and Rinzouli really speaks to this, when the highest achievers are in a, in a group, it allows the next highest achievers to really float to the top. So that the, the above average kid now, you know, is reporting, you know, I'm really smart. I didn't realize that when I was competing with every, you know, every other kid. We really turned this, and, and you could have a design that allowed for coaching individually and small group, that utilized the enrichment clusters that you just went through, that utilized curriculum compacting in an entire school-wide enrichment model that would not necessarily have cluster grouping. The cluster grouping was included in the redesigned model, at least in the next two years until we get to where we want to be totally, really based upon the focus group impact, and the research that says there was rationale for cluster grouping. And very, very carefully needs to be designed so that it is not a tracking system. We really turned this, and I gave you an example that, that would be considered a cluster model. If you only have six kids identified at the gifted, as a young scholar, if you will, and three kids identified with IDPs, and the numbers would be different, and the students, you know, in the average and above average, good instruction, raising the bar, addresses the needs of all kids, including the average child. We spoke about that.
And I want to add to this a little bit, and tie back to Dr. Kimmel's points on differentiation, because I think your question kind of goes to the essence of this, right? That, you know, says, how do you separate theory from practice and actually do this in a way that's, that's manageable? In my mind, the, the correct model would be a combination of pullout and cluster grouping, okay? And the cluster grouping would, would provide the model for, a practical model for differentiation that Dr. Kimmel spoke to earlier, that would be, would not overwhelm the classroom teacher, but provide the classroom teacher with a structure for differentiation. It would be a way to introduce differentiation to a, to a higher degree than what we are currently, what we generally find in our, our typical classrooms. So, I, I don't, you know, I think, as you consider the committee's recommendations here, I, I hope you see that there's no silver bullet here, but a, a good program that develops giftedness is a, is a combination of, of approaches. But you can't ignore the regular classroom, and the, and the kind of differentiation that should, should occur there.
So, the, the final star in the sky is a plan for the future, and that is a Young Scholar Academy, that would take all of these folks that we just spoke about, being able to mentor kindergarten children, and coach first graders, having multi-grade interdisciplinary clusters to study, in a total magnet school-wide enrichment model. And when you look at the last page of the PowerPoint, or almost the last page, it'll give you a three-year recommendation of how to get there. We were cautioned by the focus groups not to move too quickly, given some of the redesign in middle school that we're going through. So, SEM could be not just another thing, but could be everything in a school, if we can build it to get there. For purposes of time.
Before you leave this event, I, I think the place to start with this would be an elementary school that would adopt a total SEM model, and essentially, it would be gifted education applicable to all children. And that would, in addition to serving its own students, take available, fill available slots on a space-available basis from parents in other schools that wanted to opt on this, or opt, opt into this. Now, this would require, at your summer retreat, a modification in your, in the strategic operating plan under goal three, which is the choice goal, to include that as one of our choices to develop for the, for the future. But that, that would be the place to, to begin, one, one elementary school.
And, and the second bullet on that page talks about a school of choice for identified AT students, the Young Scholar Institute, based upon eligibility that we've already discussed changing, and additional seats for lottery of, of students. There are SEM schools that had no identification in it, it's total lottery. So, I put that out there for discussion, and then that begins to address natural selection and cluster grouping.
You may, you, I'm here in New York, you, you familiar with Mahal?
Yes.
Okay, what they did there years ago. From District Six has about a quarter million people, about 25 elementary schools, and demographics, 99% poor. And Mahal was a school for the kids who were bilingual kids, but still scored roughly above 85% of time in their reading and math. They got them out of those 35, 36 kids in a classroom. And now, all the other schools suffered from that model, their test scores plummeted, while the highest in the state happened to be in one of the poorest neighborhoods, in the, in the city, happened to be in one of the poorest neighborhoods. But, those kids were educated right through eighth grade, and stuff like that. Now, this, I'm, I'm looking at this, and the second bullet on.
The rationale?
Yeah, that's like, that's like, to me, like, it's kind of like, I, I use this word sometimes, maybe it's not appropriate, no brainer. You're going from one period of a pullout to all day, every day, if it's done correctly. That's the case. If it's done correctly, if the pedagogy is truly for them appropriate, but also for the whole class, or that won't be a healthy class, if those kids get to do really cool stuff, and we don't. So, it would have to be done, done properly, but this, that's an interest, like I said, that's interesting, if you, if you can really, really pull that off.
How you preserve a safe space, so, you know, I have two kids, and they get to program, so I'll, full disclaimer. And they both expressed, when they got to third grade, the relief that there was a space that they could truly be themselves, finally, intellectually. And if there isn't that safe space, if it's your reg ed classroom, and you're still possibly potentially being judged, what does that feel like for them?
Well, in the middle school, again, through curriculum compacting, we have preserved that one period every day for that interdisciplinary study, and those themes, you know, will change based upon interest and, and what the curriculum that's developed. So, that, that is preserved. The, in the elementary school, again, that co-teaching model allows, and, and the cluster grouping allows for dedication of resources to be redirected, and does allow us to serve kids K through V in a way that we're not doing now.
You know, I remember sitting in on, for a short while, on the focus group that you had of students, right? And the middle school students were basically reacting to their undifferentiated classrooms, when they said they liked being pulled out, because when they were pulled out, they were with like-minded students, and doing things that were at their level, right? And they were bored in their regular classrooms, right? So, you know, we have to approach this in, in two levels, right? There is a, a strand of, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Rinzouli's research, that says that gifted students need to spend time with other gifted students, right? But on the other hand, their needs are more fully met, as are the needs of more children if they're in a differentiated classroom as well. And to me, this is, this goes back to the very first question that was asked, was, is how does gifted education affect the rest of education? And I think with these cluster groupings, we have a way, for the first time, we have a practical way of introducing differentiation to classrooms, while at the same time recognizing that the students who qualify under the new criteria would need to spend some time with other gifted students in, in, you know, and we don't like to use the, the word pullout, but in a, in a situation outside of their, their regular classroom.
Interdisciplinary study.
I'm sorry. So, one of the things that you mentioned is that as the curriculum developed, and honestly, when we talked about AT redesign, the two things that I really expected to happen were a reinvented entry criteria, which I'm very excited about your work on, and the second was a refreshed and flushed-out curriculum. I don't see that here, and I think that's a flaw in the plan.
So, if you look at the last page, and I'll work back with, the follow-up next steps, this is course committee work. What we presented to you tonight was an overview of best thinking after six, seven months of discussion, community input, visitation, research, and on page 36, you'll see that there is an issue for the curriculum committee's work on review of instructional mapping, also known as curriculum development. There's lots that is out there already, you know, we didn't just land upon this, but we do need a very deep dive, not only in effective methods of co-teaching and accommodation and differentiation as a multi-year PD, but we need to do with the curriculum committee and our colleagues in curriculum to do that instructional mapping. So, we're not ignoring it. Tonight's presentation, you know, is, is focusing on, on.
So, I'm wondering if Dr. Eastlake, Eastlake could comment on this, because my understanding is, is not actually a gifted curriculum as such. When we speak of gifted curriculum, we mean what?
Well, it's really a way of learning.
It's a pedagogy as opposed to a curriculum.
It encompasses everything, you do, really.
You can give any book under the sun, as long as they know what the door is, it'll be fine.
So, so we're not going to write curriculum, but we're going to develop a pedagogy. Teachers who get the masters or get the 12 credit certification, they're going to be trained in that pedagogy. Are we on the right track?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
And those teachers, along with, should there be a program coordinator, or, or whatever we're going to call it, would, would work as coach, additional coaches to classroom teachers, as part of their work?
That's a quick, a quick question. So, just so I understand, the next follow-up steps are going back to special ed half committee, correct?
It needs to, because the changes in.
Right, obviously. Yeah. And then it's for a full review to the curriculum committee, as far as instructional mapping, looking at its scheduling, because that, to me, the curriculum committee is the key link here. And then what's policy, and obviously, then policy committee.
This is, this is, this is, we expect the students to work interdisciplinary, this is cross-departmental work.
And why don't we look in timeframe-wise?
I'm so happy you mentioned that. So, I'll get a skip ahead, there, there's more in here. Let's keep going, going to the timeline.
I think you passed it.
No, no, no. There it is. So, how we're going about the work, it's a three-year plan. Next year, we are developing the capacity for the pedagogy.
Okay, just let me go, I'm sorry.
Forgive me. It looks like you're far past it. It's the blue and gray. I'm just skipping ahead to answer your question.
I got it. I got to say this. Keep going.
Developing the pedagogy for the type one, type two, type three activities in all of our schools. It's identifying interest in the leadership and staff to look at that total SEM model as a magnet or school within a school. We must implement the new identification procedures. We will continue to provide in grades four through eight services, whether they pull out, or cluster groupings, to those students currently identified. We're not going to stop while we're moving. We will develop the enrichment clusters and ask the boards help in that. The curriculum development, again, is focusing on the pedagogy, the co-teaching, the curriculum compacting, the enrichment cluster identification, and depth and complexity of instruction. We will identify resources for the program coordinator, and we've added a counselor that we are looking to follow the students and assist with college planning as well. We've, we've learned very often that students that are identified and receive services, if they happen to be poor, and very often, you know, racially identified as, you know, minority, well, we're not minorities, so I was looking for the right word, that very often they'll apply to state colleges, thinking it's economically feasible for them, when really, these are the kids that can get major scholarship dollars if someone guides them to tier one and ID schools, but no, they may be first-generation, college-bound. So, we want that counselor to focus not only on the social-emotional learning, but help follow students throughout.
If I could expand on that a little bit, this is one of the reasons why we're, I've recommended to you that we not fill guidance vacancies at, at the current time. Next year, I'm going to be recommending to you, and this is as a result of urging from several board members, I'm going to be recommending to you that we study our guidance program, middle school, high school, what is it? And, you know, again, this is one of those things that is, hasn't been adjusted for the last 20 years. And, you know, this issue of college counseling now at the high school level is a very big issue, and many of the best high schools have designated several college counselors that work with students through the duration of nine through 12. The recommendation here, which I think is one of the most powerful aspects of this, is to have a counselor start with students when they're identified for the program in the elementary grades, and stay with them through middle, through high school. Now, you can imagine how well you get to know a student during that multi-year period of time. And, again, this is a very innovative recommendation. Thank the committee for it. I'd like to incorporate that into our overall plan to, you know, redesign our, and update our guidance services, but it's, it's, it's very powerful.
Is that person also intended, we talked, we touched on briefly, the social and emotional issues of our gifted population, and a lot of it has to do with perfectionism, or checking out, there's a lot of emotional anxiety, there's a lot of emotional things that happen. Is that individual meant to address that as well?
Yes, absolutely, I should have mentioned that, and the other thing I left out is that there, there would be a group guidance aspect to this, which is very, this is one of the recommended things now for elementary and middle school, is, is group guidance, where you take students who have like issues, right? And you work with them as a counselor, but as a group, so that they, they contribute to, to each other in terms of dealing with these social-emotional issues.
And where would that fit in the very tight schedule?
What do you mean?
Well, in middle school in particular, the scheduling is very tight. When would you have time for that group counselor?
Well, in the time that you do counseling, that. Well, in the time that you do counseling now. Except that this would be focused, right?
Right.
And we have a very vague conception of what's happening now, but it's happening. It's happening on some individual level. We don't do group counseling. We do not follow the state comprehensive guidance program for middle school, which is basically a social-emotional curriculum. And I think it's limited in terms of the amount of groups that we have. So, we would do it, you know, during the time we're doing it now. Julie, could you say something?
Yeah, thank you very much. So, I think, first of all, I want to thank you all for your work in that I think this, to shift so substantially, it requires not only a lot of research and thinking, but it does, change is always uncomfortable, so there's also a big mind shift that needs to happen here. And so, I appreciate that as everyone in the room kind of struggles to think through what we have now, where we want to go, and how we get there. So, I appreciate that. I also really commend the identification changes, and I look forward to the day, which hopefully is in the near future, that the AT student population represents the proportion of Norwalk student population, and hopefully that is in the very near future. I do think, a couple of cautions as I've been thinking about it, and I know there's still a lot to think through for actual how to implement, and I look forward to seeing that work in the future. A couple of cautions, I think, when we talk about, we're not calling them pullouts, but that there would still be opportunities for the AT students to come together in some iteration. I think the term interdisciplinary has been used a couple of times and understood for the purposes. That also raises a little bit of a flag for me in that all student learning should be interdisciplinary. So, I know we don't want to call it pullout, but maybe interdisciplinary isn't the most appropriate word as well. And then my other caution on some of the wording, and I understand the rationale behind maybe using the term young scholar. My apprehension on that is that all students in our school should be young scholars. So I understand the intent behind it, but what does that mean for the students who are not identified as scholars?
Yes, point is well taken. We have many charter schools that refer to their students as scholars. Okay, so those are very, very good suggestions that we will follow. Bruce?
The, what I would like, I don't know how much longer I want to discuss this tonight, but what I'm thinking about is the curriculum committee. We've been spending a lot of time on this. Craig, you're still correct. And what I, where I would like to begin is two weeks from tonight, curriculum committee, is the part, at least for me, was the biggest, right here.
Okay.
If we could, I'd like to focus on this page. And if we have a grasp of what, how these schools actually work, begin with. That would be, I think, a step forward, if we can work from there. But until I concretely can figure this out, in reality, how it works, I'd have the other, then the stuff can begin to fit in more comfortably. But if we could put this on the agenda for two weeks, and I don't know what your schedule is, but you know when we meet.
Yes, it would be very helpful for you to be at that meeting.
Yes, for the next couple of years.
By the way, Dr. Eastlake headed up, headed the gifted program West Hartford prior to going to the University of Connecticut. So, this is the model you use, and it's one you've implemented on a practical basis. So, I think you can be helpful in unpacking this for us.
Sure, that's good to know. And then finally, in 2021, we're looking at the implementation of a full-schoolwide enrichment model in a magnet school. And that will be in the development with the board's support, if that's where we go, in 2021. So, we're moving there, we're not looking to do it next September.
No, I think you, you, yes.
Quick, just to follow up. Yeah, well, first of all, thank you for the presentation. I know there's a lot of work ahead. We've had the same program, AT program, since my oldest was in third grade. So, it's been the same great program, but needs, we need a revamping on it. So there's absolutely no question. My concern was always just the process and how fair it was to all children. So we're working on that, which I'm happy about. A good point from Dr. Adamaski as far as guidance and having group guidance. I think it's so important for kids to know their guidance counselors from an early age on, because they develop those relationships. They develop those relationships with their peers, similar interests, and also, they become more college-acrew ready. They have choices, they have options. So having that guidance, I think that's an integral part, excuse me, of this as well. Having that feedback and that information and sharing ideas and thoughts on where these students want to go in classes that they want to take. But I think there is a lot of work here, but a lot of interesting work that needs to be done. And I think definitely bringing it to curriculum and then having them delve in and really working through this. And then eventually, at some point, bringing it to policy and changing what we have right now for policy for AT. But I think just maybe a fair way for all of our students. And sometimes with testing, it can be so one-dimensional, as I keep using the word holistic, but you have other avenues to look at for each child. Each child is different, and I think you have to take that into consideration. I think all kids, all students would really benefit from something like this.
Sure.
Yeah, so to piggyback on that, Heidi, I wonder if, I really think that the new identification protocol is great and expanded and wonderful. And I wondered if you had looked into, there's the non-verbal vocabulary, right? If you had looked into alternate language verbal testing instruments? I'm sure they have, they have them in countries where we have a large population of people who speak Spanish. I'm sure there's some kind of Spanish language verbal testing testing instrument that you could look into. And, oh, group guidance you're thinking about for all children, yes?
Well, I'm just saying that if you look across our state at the best guidance programs, and I believe this is particularly true at the middle school level, group guidance is an element, a fundamental element, of a comprehensive guidance program.
But not just for AT?
Oh, no, 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 no. I mean, and again, I think, you know, this is something we have to study next year. We have to rely on experts, we have to rely on what the rest of the state is doing. This is no different than any area that we have redesigned so far. We basically have to come up to the standard of 2018, 19 next year in terms of, you know, what is best practice and what does the research tell us? But my understanding is that group guidance around specific issues, you know, children who have lost a parent, children who have a family going through divorce. I mean, there's about eight, you know, six or eight of these that are...
Trauma-informed treatment?
Trauma. That, you know, the vehicle or the pedagogy for this is group guidance, where students help each other as well as get help from the counselor.
So, in two and a half hours...
I have another question. I'm really sorry, I just want to clarify the timeline from my own understanding. On point four of 2018, 19, it says, "Continue providing existing AT services to grades four through eight." We currently provide it to three through eight. Are you...
Yes.
Just continuing third grade?
We are looking at a K-three model, but the current design with the pullouts as they currently exist will be available to currently identified kids. And we're not changing, the third grade is moving up to fourth grade, but we are not instituting that for the current, for the current second graders moving into third grade.
And on the first point, your intention is to, it says, "Develop capacity," but it sounds like what you're actually planning to do is implement the school-wide enrichment model type-one, two, and three activities, K-8?
I think we need to spend a year developing the pedagogy to implement that. It's not something that we can do in a one-day PD.
Right, so this year's third graders receive nothing. They're not in the AT program per se, and there's no cluster already.
They're receiving the current program that they're currently receiving. And if you look a couple of pages earlier for the rising fourth graders, it shows you on page thirty-two, the proposal. You are correct that the third graders, the current second graders will receive supports as a K-through-three student, but we're not identifying that pullout group for the current second graders going into third grade as we're in that transition year.
Just regarding capacity on the SEM model, our gifted teachers have attended a number of workshops and done quite a bit of work on the SEM model. You don't see that manifest in the middle school because we've had this content orientation in middle school, which is not, you know, part of best practice. But at the elementary level, how far along would you say we are in terms of capacity and your work on that?
Well, there's a combination of elementary and middle schools, AT teachers who have attended Competute for Training for the last three summers. So some of us have attended three summers in a row, some of us two, some of us just once.
So I think, you know, this is a structural issue where we have to create the conditions so that our gifted teachers can successfully implement the model. But I think they...
And all AT, elementary and middle school have been infusing the same model since last year into our curriculum. We've been playing with it as we learn about it and as we receive training. So yes, it's taking place at both elementary and middle school.
I guess my question is...
Logistically, is that a question?
There's some logistics, there's some logistics, and I don't like a whole cohort of children receiving AT next year. Just as I've been unhappy about a whole cohort of students in the middle schools not having what they need, but my further, I just want to go back to what I hit on before. I need to understand why we can't provide enrichment in the classroom with our current classroom teachers and preserve the pullout model. As, you know, we talked about the best Ranzouli mod program has both enrichment and pullouts. Why are we considering eliminating what we have seen as the best practice?
Well, I think the recommendation tonight is to do both. Is to introduce the cluster, enrichment clusters as a means of promoting, developing, introducing differentiation in the regular classroom, which will help our students in the gifted program, as well as other students, and combine that with grouping of gifted students for specific purposes, which would be, you know, if you want to say, the continuation of the old pullout model. So the recommendation tonight is multifaceted. It's to do both those things and seven other things that were covered tonight to create a comprehensive gifted program.
But all clustered within the regular classroom, so there's no separate space? Am I misunderstanding that?
Yes.
I'm misunderstanding.
So let me take another, let me take another try at it.
Sorry, I'm missing it.
Right now, you know, I think it's fair to describe the state we're in as pullouts for gifted students and very little differentiation in the regular classrooms in which they reside for the majority of the time, okay? The approach here is to introduce differentiation through the cluster groups in the regular classroom. This is going to take us a while, this is not going to change overnight. But, you know, in a couple of years, we should be able to get traction and make good progress in that. At the same time, that will be combined with the pullout of gifted students for study with other gifted students. Again, that's another aspect or dimension of this. And hopefully in the future, in SEM schools in which all students will have an opportunity to develop their talents. Again, both through differentiation and pullout, but it will be a constant SEM model in the entire school.
And that small group, more in-classroom or out-of-classroom? If it's out of the classroom with the AT teacher, that can be multi-graded. Now, that is a curriculum scheduling issue that we're not going to pull those weeds here tonight, but there's no reason why we cannot serve K-five through multi-graded coaching, mentoring, guiding, facilitating, both within the enrichment clusters for everyone, and then specifically within, you know, that study group.
Bruce?
Question. Let me look at this a little farther. I think we talked once before, I was fortunate to have, we would pick with grade, they, teachers would identify where I worked, top twelve kids based on variety of factors, primarily their reading scores. And I met with them every day for three years. I was an adolescent, just like, after school for forty minutes, and we did a variety of things. If I could have had those kids all day, every day as a classroom teacher, I mean, that'd be lights out. It would be great if I did the right thing. Teacher's trained, the teacher knows what they're doing. This is like, this is like our traditional AP steroids, if it's done correctly. But the, but the good part about it is, if it's done correctly, will also change the way education is occurring in the rest of the classroom. Because the properly-trained teacher is not going to be able to get away with a group of ten special kids and everybody else. It's just not going to happen. It wouldn't, it would be a disaster. So it's going to, it's going to have an effect multiple, multiple, by I don't know how many factors, I mean, in terms of time. The kids should be getting the kind of instruction they may have been getting right now in a pullout all day, every day. Plus, they're with their peers, they're in the classroom, they're doing a variety of things together. But the other kids are getting the gifted pedagogy at the same time. So it's like, take, we talked before, this is differentiation, really taking to a more, much more democratic step, where no one is left behind. And we have this baggage based on the way parents and teachers and educators think often. We've been trained to make sure that we get the bottom of the proficiency. Years and years and years, it's been the focus. And then they started with growth models and the way they assessment, and now, which is good. And now we're using that data to really begin to truly differentiate. And I think, I think this is really, I just had no idea until I saw that class. I was a hundred percent on board, and then you point out the three classrooms. I said, "That's interesting, that could really work." And I'm curious when we work out the details. That's kind of, that's a fascinating thing, because that could create problems once you get in the fourth and fifth grades. If those kids are ready for Algebra II, you've got issues you're going to have to deal with.
And let me say, when you do the curriculum compacting, particularly in the middle school, that leads to, in particularly in grades seven and eight, algebra, biology, beginning to get acceleration, which is not the focal point. But now we move towards kids going into high school with four, five, six, seven credits towards their higher, you know, higher credit requirement, and then leaving time to really do that in-depth study of passion, interest, and talent at the high school level. So it really is braided with some of the work, a lot of the work at the middle school redesign.
Okay. I want to thank the committee for their exhausting work over the last six months, seven months, and all the research you've done, thinking. I want to thank our consultant for introducing us to best practice and all of Dr. Ranzouli's lifetime of research on this topic. And, you know, this will not be something that we start, we're perfect at from the start, but it will guide us to start and be better every single year that we do this. And I just want to, you know, end on a very positive note of saying that we are, I talked to other superintendents, we are one of the few districts in the state that are resourced as... at a level that we couldn't even consider this. With the eight positions, over a million dollars, we're not asking for more funds here except for a slight amount for the coordinator or the lead teacher. But we have a tremendous capacity in what we have and have been able to maintain budgetarily. And, you know, I credit the board for that, for doing that, because it's put us in this position where we can, we can consider something like the recommendations that we'll make tonight. So, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Very solid presentation. The next item on the agenda is public comments. I was not going to ask another question, we've taken enough of those. We have one, one sign up, and you'll have to make room for other persons to come up and speak there. Mary Jordan.
Mary Jordan, Nine Mark Avenue. I just wanted to also thank the committee, all of you, the teachers, the parents, everybody who spent so much time, working so hard. A really impressive model, it's an impressive program. Dr. Adamowski mentioned the burden on teachers, and it does sound like this is a heavy lift. The teachers are ready to get to work. We ask for training, we ask for time to understand it and implement it. It's been a long time coming to overhaul this, and we appreciate the opportunity to do better service to our students. We are concerned about the burdensome nature of this, but we're ready to do what's required. Thank you.
Ms. Jordan, we would appreciate as many teachers as possible to come to those Curriculum Committee meetings, they're the ones who have to implement this.
I will pass that word along, thank you.
Okay, we'll, we only have one sign up, but we'll take other speakers.
I'm doing this, I'm doing this, I'm really sorry. I'm a rookie, I'm sorry.
So, for a rookie, you get three minutes.
Okay, three minutes, okay.
State your name and address to start off.
Okay, so my name is Victoria Kramer, my address is 24 Woodbine Street. And I echo everything that the woman before me stated. So many of you board members have said, thank you so much to this committee, who has done such an excellent, thorough, exhaustive job on this. It is clearly something that has been needed, and I really appreciate the passion that it has been pursued with. As a rookie, I am a parent of a second grader, and so I do have two concerns. Number one, most, most, my biggest concern is how intense and exhaustive and this 2018, 2019 idea is. My concern is the timing of it in terms of, it is April 3rd, April 3rd, and yet we still have, the curriculum needs to go through it, the Special Education Committee needs to go through it, the Policy Committee needs to go through it. So, I worry that if this gets passed on August 15th, what does that mean for the actual program and the success and the... I would like to see this done really well, the way that all of the six, seven months that have gone into this envision it happening. So, that is my one concern. I would like, I'd like maybe the thought behind that to occur, although I'm sure it already has, but I'd like to reiterate my concern about that. And then finally, to your point, Barbara, with the third graders possibly having the remaining program exist for next year, my concern is actually the current second graders not having anything. They will not get tested this spring, they will not have access to the AT program at all, even if down the road, we're talking about it, we'll enter in the fourth grade, I'm all on board with that. But as a parent of a second grader, I am worried that he will be left behind.
So, I think this is an issue for us to explore further, because my understanding, having seen a preview of the committee's work, was that the, we hope that the identification program would be implemented at the beginning of next year. And that would include the special identification for K-three, which is different than the testing system. And that's by necessity, because with very young children, we don't have that testing data, right? Excuse me. So, I think, I think maybe fleshing out what is the, what would be the K-three identification would be appropriate, and it would address your question, and that's something I think we need to just flesh out further.
And we do have best practice, and we're ready to roll that out. Just for purposes of time, we could have spent an hour on the K-three identification. But when we went to the recent association meeting, there were very specific required processes that we must go through K-three for the identification. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? No? All right, that concludes that. Chair would now entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing a collective bargaining proposal.
Salute.
Second, all in favor? Aye, we're in executive session.